Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held here on April 10th, 2023, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to declare a quorum, which we do have. Second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Item three is the public forum. Mayor, nobody signed up, okay? Item four is the superintendent's recognitions. Would the members please come in front of the dais? All right. Item A is recognition of Eric Ortiz, Temple High School Soccer. It's Parks. And now, ladies and gentlemen, please turn your attention to the center dais as we honor Eric Ortiz, who is the new all-time scoring record holder for the Temple Wildcats soccer program.
So we don't start every board meeting off like that, but considering that Kent is the voice of Wildcat soccer, we thought that would be fitting tonight. And so Eric, Eric's first goal was scored against Mahalia in his first high school soccer game as a freshman on January 2nd, 2020. His record-breaking goal was made on Friday, January 20th, right here at our very field. Actually, the first season he got to play on the new field. Eric currently ended the season with 104 goals, which now stands as the new Temple High School Boys Soccer Career Scoring Record. Eric comes from a THS soccer legacy. It includes his two older brothers, that I think at least one is here, maybe both. And they also played all four years of their high school careers. And tonight, Eric has many family that are with him, but he also has his coach. So Coach Corley, if you will come on up. Eric, this is the ball that you scored the career-breaking goal with. So if you will sign that, we will keep that as part of our soccer legacy here, and you'll be able to take the other one with you. But truly, there aren't many times when you get to experience a record like this, and it will be a long time in Temple High School soccer before we ever experience it again. So Eric, thank you for letting us be part of this journey, and we just, we couldn't be more proud of you. So congratulations.
First of all, I want to thank Coach Corley. You have done a fantastic job developing our players and program. Let's give him a round of applause. He is fantastic. And Eric, I want you to introduce your family before I make a few more comments.
I have my dad and my mom, Francisco Ortiz, Delmo Ortiz. I have both of my brothers, Francisco Ortiz and Esteban Ortiz. My niece is over there. My sister-in-law, Jasmine. And then I have one of my friends over there, Mateo Lopez. So, thank you.
And I know Eric believes this as well, but we want to thank all family members because this is truly a team effort. The sacrifices you've made for your son to allow him the opportunity to perform has been extraordinary. So congratulations to you. And Eric, I don't know if we can honor you enough, but congratulations for being the very best offensive soccer player in the history, that's since 1883, of Temple, of Temple ISD. Congratulations, Eric. We're proud of you.
And if y'all want to take any pictures, family, you're welcome to. Anybody else? I was gonna say, brother's, he's about to get his camera out, I can tell.
Coach Corley, you want to get in the picture?
Here, yeah.
And that ball will go in a trophy case?
This one will go to the program, so that we will keep this with us. Congratulations.
Our next item is recognition of Keymarion Dobbins Lamar Middle School Track.
So Quamarian Dobbins, known as Q, has played football, basketball, and track for both years at middle school. And this year, he was the varsity running back and team captain. During his track season this year, he placed second in the 100 and 200 meter dash at the district meet, and he held the fastest 100-meter time, according to Milesplit, in the country for kids his age with a time of 9.95. That's seconds. Coach Perkins, who is Q's coach, just says that he is an example to all of his peers in all areas, academically, socially, and in athletics, and that you are the athlete that coaches dream about having. So we are, we are wowed by your athletic ability and accomplishments, but we are even more in awe about the person that you are. And we look forward to watching you grow and develop as a young man, as well as an athlete, for several, several years to come. And we are so glad to be able to honor you tonight. And I, I know your grandmother couldn't be here, but uncle is here and cousin, so they're here in the back, and we are just also very proud of you. So congratulations.
Take no offense. He wanted me to introduce you instead of him, because he's up here. It's a little nerve-wracking. So yes, his uncle Marcus is here, and his cousin Marcus is here as well. What, what Q doesn't know is before I found him in his science classroom, I went to about three other classrooms of teachers that had him, and I asked about him, and they said that he is very polite. He's a hard worker. He does well in school, and he has great character. So he's not just somebody that performs on the track. He's a performer outside the track. And we look forward to watching you burn up that brand-new track next year when you're in high school. Congratulations. We're proud of you.
Congratulations.
Item C is recognition of Transform Temple.
Businesses and organizations and nonprofits across central Texas contribute each and every day to Temple ISD, and we really rely on their partnerships. And today, we are really pleased and to be able to honor Transform Temple for the generosity that they have shown us in so many ways, and that now TASB also recognizes that contribution at the state level for their support of public schools. From assisting with special events like the Sampson Howard opening to our groundbreaking to keeping and caring for our grounds here in the Plaza and to everything in between. You guys, Buford, Craig, and Buford, Chad, and Henry are always there, ready to support at any time, regardless of what we need. And just you and your team tirelessly or involved tirelessly in so many things that, that a lot of people never even see you, but you kind of slip in and slip out like ninjas. And, but we definitely notice when you're not there. So we greatly appreciate all that you do. And again, just for the support that you have shown the school district, it's tremendous, and it makes a difference for our students, staff, community, and, and our families. So thank you.
Just want to express the appreciation on behalf of the board for everything y'all have done, especially the Sampson Howard dedication. I mean, that made it, that put it over the top. Y'all bringing the stage out there, the sound stuff. We have a true partnership, I believe. So again, thank y'all, and we look forward to working with y'all for many more years to come.
I was, I was telling Dr. Ott, I graduated from Temple High School many, many, many years ago. And I was telling Dr. Ott, I'm not used to sitting on the front row. And I, I was in the back row back then, and he told me, no, sit up front. So I moved back to Temple about 10, 12 years ago. And it's been one of the delights of my life to, to actually find my life's work in working for the public, in serving the city, and working with some fine people. Chad and Henry are just two of many people in our department, but the, the whole city of Temple, and the partnerships we've been able to create with the, the school district, not just TISD, but other school districts in the area and other cities. So this, this means a lot. We do a lot, and being recognized, as Christine said, we often sneak in and then are long gone by the time the big weeks show up. So it's important to, to me personally, but also to the team. So, so thank you all.
Appreciate you guys so much. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Item D is recognition of ASBO International Certificate of Excellence and Financial Reporting Award, COE, for the FY 2022 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Okay, Finance Department, who's coming up? Everybody can come up. Congratulations. I am very pleased to announce that Temple Independent School District was awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Association of School Business Officials International for the 2022 fiscal year, for the fourth consecutive year. By participating in this program, school districts demonstrate their commitment to financial transparency, and applicants submit a very extensive portfolio application that's reviewed by a team of financial professionals who provide feedback along the way. The requirement is very rigorous to, to earn this certification, but again, this team has done that for four years in a row. At this time, I would like to recognize our entire finance department that, by name. So if you're here, wave, and if not, well, we know that they're here in spirit. So the department is led by Chief Financial Officer Brandy Stanford. We have Terry Burlison, Donna Alamon, Brenda Holmes, Deana Vickery, Amy Branton, Helen Green, Teresa Spinks, Sue Lynn Adams, and Tammy Frenzel. So you guys, speaking of working behind the scenes, are also always there, working behind the scenes and making sure that we are in compliance with so many things that the rest of us can't even begin to keep track of. But we are so grateful that you do it, and you do it with integrity and transparency. And so we appreciate all that you do. Congratulations, and we're looking forward to many, many more of these to come. So congratulations, Finance Department.
I just want to say, this is a state-wide recognition.
National.
National, I'm sorry, national recognition. This is huge for the last four years in a row. Thank you for everything y'all do for TISD and for our budget process. So thanks. Would you like to say yes?
The recognition of this award really belongs to Callan Baden and the entire finance team, and thank you for recognizing their daily commitment to achieving financial transparency.
Item E, recognition of earning three Gold Star Awards and one Silver Star Award at the 61st Annual Texas School Public Relations Association, TSPRA Conference Communications.
So I would like to invite the entire communications department up to be recognized. They love to stand behind the scenes. So come on, John, go up, Christine. We are so very proud of them. He's used to being on the other side of the camera. All right, somebody get your camera. All right, so the Temple Independent School District's Communication Department has been recognized with three Gold Stars and one Silver Star Award presented by the Texas Schools Public Relations Association. This year's Star Awards recognize the work produced during the 21-22 school year. Temple ISD won honors in all four Star Award categories entered. The department was honored with a Gold Star Award for its Bond 2022 website, a Chamber of Commerce Community Guide advertisement, and the district's Temple ISD Leadership Definition Framework logo. Temple ISD claimed a Silver Star Award for its Choose Temple ISD Human Resources Teacher Recruitment Video. Thank you, Coach Corley. We need an expert. Thank you. The problem is, will they use that photo? They may not. Temple ISD, what we do want you to know is that Temple ISD competed, competed with all districts across the state of Texas with 15,000 or fewer students, which means Temple ISD had to compete with districts and departments that are almost twice as big as Temple ISD, and yet they still earned those gold stars. Our, their department gets to tell our story, your stories, every day, and their final products are seen by an ever-growing audience of stakeholders. And I know they're very grateful that their work was recognized by their peers, as we're so very grateful for the work that they do for the district every day. Behind every social media post, press release, and media interview are Christine Parks, John Wallin, and Eric Larson, who thoughtfully and professionally craft every communication. And when your work is really public, it lends itself to a different kind of responsibility that's built in. And we want to commend these gentlemen and their fearless leader for the extraordinary job they do every day for Temple ISD.
This is another award that puts us on the map. Christine, John, Eric, thank y'all for the hard work y'all do and the spot-on work. I mean, it's amazing, the product that y'all turn out here. And so I know on behalf of the board, I'll speak again on behalf of the board, just so appreciative of your work, and we have come a long ways on marketing communications. So. This is the last of a recognition, so y'all can stay if you want to, if you enjoy a good school, school board meeting. But y'all feel free to go if y'all want to.
The ones that were recognized.
The ones that were recognized, yeah. All right. Item five is the executive hires. A, introduction of Associate Principal, Temple High School Katie Waller, and Assistant Principal, Kader Elementary, Hugh Burke.
Okay, guys, come on up. Okay, so this does not require board approval, but we would like you to see their beautiful smiling, or handsome, beautiful and handsome, smiling faces, and introduce you to them. And so this is Katie Waller. She is currently the instructional coach at Lamar, and much to Ms. Bradford's chagrin, she is losing Katie to the high school to be the new associate principal. So Katie Waller. Katie, can you introduce your family real quick?
I can. This is my husband Blake. He is a band director at Bonham Middle School. My son Mason, he will be a sixth grader at Bonham next year. And this is my daughter Kelsey. She will be a freshman at Temple High next year. So we're very excited. Thank you.
And Mama?
Oh, and no words for that sweet lady over there.
And then Mr. Hugh Burke is leaving the digital learning team, and he's going to be the new assistant principal at Kader Elementary, much to the chagrin of Ashley Jones in the digital learning community. So would you like to introduce your wife, your lovely wife?
This is my wife, Greta, who joined me tonight.
Perfect, thank you. And, and so here are our new leaders. You know, we're, we're proud to grow our own and hire our own. And so we're very thankful for your leadership that you demonstrated so far, and can't wait to see what you do next.
Very excited, thank you.
Katie, I think you have one family member you forgot to introduce, right behind you. Well, just gratulations on y'all's new positions. We know enjoyed what y'all have done in the past, the connections, and looking forward to the future. So thank y'all, both of y'all. Item six is the Board President's Report. A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Resolution to Extend Timeline for Approval of 2023 through 2024 Compensation Guide. And first, there's a resolution. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution, and then Dr. Ward will, will explain. Okay. Resolution of the Board Regarding Approval of the 2023-2024 Compensation Guide, whereas the Board adopts the annual proposed compensation guide accorded to Texas Education Code, Section 44.002, which requires superintendent to prepare or cause to be prepared proposed budget for districts with a July 1st fiscal year by June 19th, whereas the Texas 88th Legislative Session is currently in session and will end on May 29th, 2023, notwithstanding a special session. Whereas the Board acknowledges that legislative decisions made during the 88th Legislative Session in late May or June may impact budget proposal timelines for districts with an early fiscal year. And whereas the proposed increase in school funding in the 88th Legislative Session is anticipated to increase employee compensation, but because the session does not end until May 29th, 2023, employees may not know final compensation decisions until after June. It is therefore resolved by the Temple Independent School District Board of Trustees that, one, the Board finds that it is in Temple ISD's best interest to avoid prematurely adopting a compensation guide that may not reflect new legislative proposed requirements that had not been passed. And, two, the Board finds that provide additional time for the TISD Human Resources Department and the TISD Finance Department to adjust the Temple ISD 2023-2024 Budget and Compensation Guide based on final legislative decisions from the 88th Legislative Session will allow Temple ISD to remain competitive and retain quality staff. Three, the Board authorizes additional time for the TISD Human Resources Department and the TISD Finance Department to adjust the Temple ISD 2023-2024 Compensation Guide based on final legislative decisions from the 88th Legislative Session in order to ensure the budget effectively reflects the district's programs and activities, and in order to maintain the morale of staff. And, four, the Board authorizes the extension of the deadline for the superintendent to prepare or cause to be prepared the 2023-2024 Proposed Budget and Compensation Guide after legislation decisions from the 88th Session are final. Dr. Ward?
Okay, so this resolution, which does require approval by the Board, would allow the district extra time to prepare and create the Compensation Guide for the 23-24 school year. Typically, we are required to have that completed and approved by the Board in, in the middle of June. However, with the legislative session this year, and knowing that there are going to be some financial decisions that are going to impact our Compensation Guide for the next school year, we don't want to get ahead of the game and then have to come back and tell our teachers something different from what we've approved in July. So we're asking that you extend that deadline for us until after the legislative session, knowing that we'll probably go into special sessions as well, which could push it into July or even later. And so that's the reason we're asking for that, that the Board resolution to extend the deadline.
All right, members, are there any questions? Dr. Ward? This does require approval. Motion by Ms. Suarez.
All second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side and oppose. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Resolution is adopted.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. In fact, I'll go ahead and sign it right now. It is done.
Right after the board meeting, I'll send an email to the staff explaining it with a video as well.
Yeah. All right. B, Presentation of Temple ISD Demographic Report. Bob Templeton and Hudson Huff. Welcome, Bob.
Good evening, Board President, members of the Board. Dr. Ott, it is my pleasure to be with you tonight. I'm joined by Hudson Huff, my associate. We, he started working with our district last fall, and he is a Temple graduate. So he graduated from Temple High School a few years ago. He's got over 20 years' experience working with school districts, primarily the Keller School District with construction planning, demographics. So we're excited for him to be a part of this project, and he has done a significant amount of the work and the research and helping me with this project. Tonight, I'm going to give you the overview of our spring report. We'll touch on the economic conditions that we're seeing across the state and specific to what's happening here in the Temple region. I'll spend a good bit of time talking about the housing market, and then we'll look at the enrollment projections. I'm not seeing a clicker up here. Okay, all right. So big picture on the unemployment rates. You can see from this graph that March of 2020, hard to believe that was three years ago when the pandemic started, we saw the unemployment rate shoot up to over 13%. It was historic. It was the health crisis of the pandemic. You'll notice that the unemployment rates did improve pretty significantly over the last several years. But I will tell you, while the unemployment rate is close to where it was prior to the pandemic, it really doesn't feel like it, because there's still a tremendous amount of challenge in the labor force. So the last two years have also been known as the Great Resignation. So there's been tremendous amount of turnover in the labor force, and many industries are still struggling to fill positions. It's happening in professional service. It's happening in construction. It's also still challenging for education to fill the support service roles. Some of our clients are still challenged with filling substitute teaching positions as well as teaching positions. So while the unemployment rate is near what it was prior to the pandemic, it still feels a little bit challenging. Overall, we are still seeing job growth in the central Texas Temple region. So the job growth is still strong. We are still seeing population moving into the state. Texas is still the fastest-growing state in the country, and the central Texas region is still continuing to see strong population growth. Next slide. Want to touch on the multifamily picture from a big picture. This is the multifamily statistics for the Waco-Tempel-Clean region. The blue bar represents the occupancy rates. The gold and the green lines represent the effective and the market rent rates. You'll notice that during 2021 and 2022, the early parts, the occupancy rates were well over 95%, which means they're basically full. We did see the increasing rent rates during that period as well. We have seen some significant multifamily construction. We're also seeing some multifamily construction within the Temple ISD boundary. I'll get to some of those details in the slide just following, but one to give you the big picture. We're starting to see the rent rates soften. So there is a little bit of softening in the rent rates, which is helpful. Next slide. Specific to just Temple. So this is looking at the Temple-specific multifamily statistics. You'll notice the occupancy rate in the Temple area was right at 94%. Again, that's basically fully occupied. The, we did see some additional units brought on. The, we did see some additional units brought on, so we're starting to see some new units brought on. The effective rent rates have also stabilized in the Temple region as well. Next slide. Now, this is total home sales within the Temple ISD boundary. You'll see the spike that happened in twenty-twenty-one. Hard to believe that the pandemic actually caused housing to accelerate, but it did. We saw an increase in construction. We saw a pretty significant increase in the price of housing. So we saw a surge in twenty-twenty-one. It dropped back down in twenty-twenty-two. But keep in mind, if you take out twenty-one, that's still one of the best years that we've seen in the last fifteen years. So I want to keep that in context, that twenty-one was the real outlier because of the high number versus twenty-twenty-two is still a second highest year that we've seen. Next slide. You can see what's happened with pricing. This is the average price for new homes within Temple ISD over the last ten years. And then we've also got a column which represents the average sale price of existing home sales within Temple. You'll notice that it has gone up considerably. The purple line is the average price for new home. It's a combination of supply chain challenges. It's the increased cost of some of the materials. It's the shortage of labor and the high demand that have caused the price of the new homes to go up. Now, while this may seem high for the residents here of Temple, when you compare it to Austin, when you compare it to Dallas-Fort Worth, this is, in my opinion, a real positive and it keeps your housing at a little bit more affordable than what we see to the south and what we see to the north. The average price for a new home in Austin is well over five hundred thousand dollars. So this is going to make Temple more desirable in the long run because of the affordability. And you can get to parts of the job growth areas of Austin within less than an hour. So that proximity is going to continue to put this region in a very good spot. Next slide. Now, this is a zoomed-in look of your current elementary attendance zones. Those green shaded areas are the active subdivisions that are building single-family homes. The yellow shaded areas are the future subdivisions that are in the planning stages. We also are tracking about five developments that are in the early stages of the city planning process. So this future map is changing almost every month. We literally have over six hundred lots right now that technically aren't considered futures because they haven't quite gone all the way through the permitting process. But many of those will likely get approved within the next few months. So I just wanted to give you the big picture of what's happening in terms of single-family development. What you'll also notice is the Ray Allen Zone has the most active single-family developments in it. So the future elementary location is really in a great spot in relationship to that single-family growth that's happening in those green shaded areas that are down in the Ray Allen Zone. We've got seventeen actively building subdivisions and we've got ten futures that are already in the planning stages and then an additional five that are currently in the very early stages of the planning. Now, I'm going to give you some of the highlights. We're not going to cover all of these active subdivisions. So on the next slide, you'll notice that we've got the Oak Ridge Development, which is three hundred future lots. There's groundwork underway on the remaining lots. So we will continue to see activity in Oak Ridge. There's a satellite image from January the twenty-third that illustrates that future development and the groundwork that's underway there. The current yield is about point three four one students per home, but the overall yield for the attendance zone is about point four nine. This yield will go up as those homes get fully occupied and we see more residents there. So we do expect the Oak Ridge Development at buildout of that, just that neighborhood would have about a hundred and forty-seven students at buildout. To the south there, we've got Waters Crossing, which is seventy-five future lots. The final plat was approved in April of twenty-twenty-two. You can see from the satellite image on the right side of that screen, that development activity is underway. We do expect that we'll see home building this summer in the Waters Crossing. And again, with the average yield for that zone, we expect this neighborhood would generate about thirty-six students when they build all of the homes in Waters Crossing. And this is in the current Garcia Zone. Next is the Country View Edition, which is two hundred and twenty-two lots, ninety-four vacant developed lots. Phase two, it delivered at the end of twenty-twenty-two, so home building is starting in that section. The current yield is point four zero four students per home. Again, once that neighborhood builds out, we expect there'll be about a hundred and eight students in Country View Edition. Next slide is the-
Mr. Templeton, before you go to the next slide, after each quadrant's discussed, I just want to give a synopsis on those pieces just for the board. And I know we have media here as well. So what Mr. Templeton just covered was the northeast quadrant of the school district and with a focus on elementary because that's obviously right now what we're looking at in terms of growth. And in looking at those three subdivisions that he covered, it's showing a total of two hundred and ninety-one additional elementary students in the northeast quadrant. Now, remember, that is based on current activity. So that is if no other home was built from this point to twenty-thirty-two, that's what we would have in the northeast quadrant. So then you go and look at the two elementary schools in that quadrant. One is Garcia, obviously, and the other is Jefferson. And when you look at their total capacity in the building, remember, I didn't say portables because it's the community's desire that we do not have portables. In the building itself, when you look at the capacities that we have between those two campuses, we have a total of three hundred and twenty-five additional seats between Jefferson and Garcia right now. So if you take away the two hundred and ninety-one additional students, that leaves you a delta of thirty-four. So that means if no other home was built, no other subdivision took place in the northeast quadrant between now and twenty-thirty-two, we would only have thirty-four spaces. And that doesn't include rezoning efforts. It doesn't include if we moved a special program to Jefferson or Garcia or moved one out and so forth. Now, I will tell you, that is cutting it close. To only have thirty-four spaces left is cutting it really, really close. So this is one for us, as is right now, current. It's not suggesting we need additional capacity at either Garcia or Jefferson right this moment, right? But we have to keep a very close eye on it because, one, thirty-four is tight and, two, realistically, the chances in the next ten years or nine years of having more development out there is pretty high. So that wraps up the northeast quadrant summary-wise. Any questions from the board on that? Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll look at the Willow Glen section, which you can see we're moving now to a different part of the district. These are located in the Kennedy Powell Attendance Zone. Willow Glen has two hundred and three lots. All the lots have been delivered for home building. This is D.R. Horton Express, so it is a production builder. We don't have any students in there when we did the Geocode this fall, but we do expect that area to yield high. That's the pattern that we see with most D.R. Horton developments is that they do yield in that point seven range, which is the yield of the attended zone. So we expect that this could generate about a hundred and forty-four students at buildout. Next, we're looking at Mont Verde, which is ninety-five total lots. There's thirty homes occupied. There is groundwork underway on phase two, which is thirty-seven lots. Again, based on the yield of the zone, we expect that this neighborhood could yield about sixty-seven students when they build all of the homes in Mont Verde. Next, we'll look at Atacosa Estates. It's a hundred and forty-one total lots, thirty-two homes under construction. So very strong activity is already taking place there. First homes finished toward the end of twenty-twenty-two. Again, we didn't have students when we did the Geocode. I suspect you're already seeing students moving into the district for sure by this summer. At buildout, we expect there'll be about fifty-seven students in this neighborhood when it builds all of the remaining homes.
And if I could sum up this piece here, so this is the northwest quadrant of the school district geographically. And so once again, three subdivisions in the northwest quadrant, that yields two hundred and sixty-eight additional elementary students. Once again, that is if there's not a single additional home or a residential unit built in the next nine years. So if you go to Kennedy Powell and Western Hills, which are two elementary schools in the northwest quadrant, and you look at the capacity in those buildings, we come up with a total of a hundred and fifteen, well, we come up with a total of a hundred and fifty-three additional seats. So if we have a hundred and fifty-three additional seats, but two hundred and sixty-eight students coming, that is a delta of a hundred and fifteen seats that we need now. Just in that area, based on current buildout. We're going to need a hundred and fifteen seats. A hundred and fifteen is five to six classrooms at a state ratio of one to twenty-two. Okay, so that's important to realize and that doesn't include, there's a lot of space out there in the northwest. We've talked about some potential future developments out there, residential. So that doesn't include any of those. That's only the current activity in the demographic study. So right now, northeast quadrant doesn't look like we have a need for additional capacity at this point in time, right? At this very point in time, you know, Bob brought up a good point. This is changing about every month. In the northwest quadrant, we already need a hundred and fifteen seats, okay? Based on just the numbers here. Any questions? Okay.
Next, we're going to move to the south part of the district in the Ray Allen Attendance Zone. Again, this is the most active for single-family construction. It is where you're going to be opening a school in the future. So we're going to highlight at first Pecan Creek South, which is five hundred and twenty-three total lots, twenty-one homes under construction in Pecan Creek South. Phase three, which has a hundred and sixty-three lots, it did deliver toward the end of twenty-twenty-two. So we should see new homes starting in phase three this spring and summer. And we should see a yield at buildout of about two hundred and fourteen students when they build the remaining vacant developed lots and get those futures delivered. To the south there is South Point, which is three hundred and twenty-nine total lots, seventeen homes under construction. Phase three with eighty-five lots. It was delivered this past fall. This is Keela Homes and the current yield in that neighborhood is point one nine six. We do expect that yield will go up as they get more homes occupied. At buildout, South Point could generate about a hundred and thirty-four students when they build all of the homes in South Point. Next, we'll look at Prairie Ridge, which is three hundred and seventy total lots. There were nine homes under construction. They have future phases that have been recently delivered and the current yield is point one four four. We expect this yield will jump to about point four one. And at buildout, Prairie Ridge would generate about a hundred and fifty-one students. To the south there is Hillside Village. I believe this is the neighborhood where the next elementary is going to be located. Is that correct, Dr. Ott?
It is.
Now, we see this-
Right across, right across Canyon Creek.
So it's real close to this area.
It's right across.
And it's, we tend to see when you build a new elementary, the surrounding yields of the communities around it will definitely go up. So we do expect this will be a magnet and help really spur housing growth and student growth due to the fact that there's going to be a new elementary there. But you can see that Hillside Village, two hundred and sixty-five total lots, eleven homes under construction. This is Keela Homes and Omega Homes. At buildout, we expect there could be about a hundred and eight students in Hillside Village. Next, we'll look at the Reserve at Friars Creek, phase three. This is townhomes that are under construction, sixty-eight townhomes. We estimate they'll be completed this summer. They're relatively high in the rent rates, between twenty-two hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars a month. So the yield for this multifamily type zoning would be somewhere around point two three. So at buildout, this could be about fifteen students. There's a south section there called The Tour, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. It's two hundred and twenty-three multifamily units that are under construction, should be completed sometime this summer. Based on the multifamily yields for this attendance zone, we could see about fifty-one students in this community when it builds out.
And really quick, just to summarize the south or southeast quadrant, and this is really the last piece of the district. So when you look at total buildout, and now we have six subdivisions in the south or southeast instead of the three that we had in northeast and three in northwest, we have six just in this area. So that will give you a total buildout of a thousand forty-two students. Now, keep in mind, that includes the forty-nine overage that we currently have at Ray Allen. So that's in that number because remember, that overage is, they're out in portables and we said no portables in the last, well, since two thousand and eleven. That's been the community's desire. So if you take a thousand forty-two and you subtract the new elementary school seating, which is seven ninety-two, you subtract the additional space at Scott Elementary, which is sixty-one. We have sixty-one slots at Scott. Plus, with this last bond, we're adding four classrooms to Scott Elementary, so that's another eighty-eight. And you subtract that, you get a total of a hundred and one seats that are needed right now. So here's the thing. One, it legitimizes, as Bob said, the new elementary school for sure and the location of it. But two, there is a lot of land between Ray Allen, the new elementary school, and all the way south to Academy ISD's borders. A lot of land. This doesn't include any of that development at all. So in the next ten years, it's fair to say, just knowing some of the people who have already bought property south of the new school, that there will be development there. So, and we're already in need by a hundred and one seats in the southeast. And this, like I said, this doesn't include any new development in the south. So what this points to is, one, we need to purchase land in the south for another elementary school. Two, thankfully, we've already purchased land for the next middle school. And we'll get to that when you get to the capacities. So we're set there because remember, that site is co-located with Sampson Howard. We purchased forty-seven and a half acres, of which eighteen or so is for the new elementary and the rest, on the backside or the east side, is for the new middle school whenever that comes to fruition. So great planning for the, you know, credit to the board for great foresight on an elementary school being there, but also the middle school property already being purchased. And then this is pointing to the need for us to purchase elementary school property in the south.
So when we look at the enrollment projections on the next slide, you'll notice the gold line is this fall's enrollment. So from this fall, the enrollment was eight thousand six hundred and sixty-five, which was about two hundred and four students of growth, about a two-point-four percent growth rate. You'll notice that over the next five years, I'm basically holding it at that two, two-and-a-half percent growth, which bottom line means we're building about four to five hundred single-family homes per year. So the single-family home is the real driver for a majority of your growth. There is some growth for multifamily, but overall, this forecast model is about four to five hundred homes of growth. When we see that, we'll see growth of about two hundred students per year. In ten years, it could be at about eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-three. The next slide, we'll get into the campus-specific projections. You'll notice the top part of that table is the elementary projections. You'll notice when the cell turns yellow, that's when it exceeds the capacity for that campus. Now, keep in mind, the next elementary will open in the fall of twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that's when you'll be able to see some changes in those capacities because of bringing on that additional school. And then the following year is when the Scott additional capacity will come online. You'll notice also at the middle school level, Bonham Middle School will receive some additional capacity estimated for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. So that'll help a little bit with capacity at Bonham Middle School. And your high school will see an addition in the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, which will take that capacity to about twenty-six hundred. So you can see with this new elementary and the capacity, definitely will help for the next three to four years. But beyond that is when you'll start to really feel the pressure because it's not a matter of if these numbers are going to happen. It's just a matter of when. When's the timing? Do we see it accelerate for a period, slow down as the economy moves up and down related to inflation, related to the interest rates? Certainly- Certainly it could. But I definitely see Central Texas continuing to be very strong in its overall growth because of job growth and because of the location on thirty-five between Dallas-Fort Worth and Austin. It's a very strategic location that really puts you in a good spot. Any questions here? Next, wanted to give you just the key takeaways. The unemployment rate in the Colleen Temple MSA has returned to the pre-pandemic trends, but it still feels a little challenging because of that challenges in the labor force. The district has seventeen actively building subdivisions with over thirteen hundred available lots ready for builders to build on today. We've got five future subdivisions with over four thousand eight hundred lots that are in the planning stages. The developers haven't slowed down, even with the rising interest rates and this inflation concern. The developers are still going at a very strong pace. We've got groundwork right now underway on over two hundred and eighty lots. And there's additional lots that are going through the city's permitting process. We do expect your enrollment will top nine thousand eight hundred students in five years and more than eleven thousand three hundred students in ten years. Any additional questions? Any, any, anything else?
Members, are there any questions?
Well, we are very thankful to be able to work with the district. And if you think of something later on, don't hesitate. You can always send it to Dr. Ott. We'd be happy to respond to any, any questions that you might have.
I know this is an ongoing process, and I very much appreciate y'all coming up here and doing this for us. It's a, this is so important for us to figure out our next moves and our next steps. And the district is growing.
Yes.
We know that. And just figure out the right way to work with this growth.
Thank you.
And you're very helpful.
Yeah, Bob and Hudson, I wanted to thank both of you for your work. Relationship that we've established since 2018. And it's been so helpful. We, we, I believe, one of the reasons that we got the elementary school right in terms of location and timing, had a lot to do with our partnership and work together. And we're very grateful for that. I know the, the community is as well, the, the timing of the bond and everything that, the opening of the school and so forth. And we're happy to have you reunite with your hometown. You probably know every alley, nook and cranny in this town. You could probably give us a heck of a report next year. And I want to thank Eric Hoggelberg back there quietly. He is, he has a lot of expertise, and he's done this several different entities, and he's worked very hard. It's not easy dealing with me, number one, and he's done a great job of that. But number two, all these numbers and, and just, you know, trying to deliver something to the board and the community that they can be confident in in terms of planning. And so thank all of you for your hard work. We are truly grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob and Hudson, thanks again. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming down.
You're welcome.
For the report. All right, item C, discussion to submit resolutions for TASB's 2022 through 2024 added to the agenda. I believe the members should have at your desk our 2023 legislative positions and priorities for Temple ISD. And if you're all comfortable with that, we will submit that to TASB. I think, what Marilyn, is there the deadline?
In June.
In June. So I guess we have time to discuss too, if anything else we want to do. But initially, I think we want to submit this document since it is a board approved. Any questions, discussion? Okay. Item D is announcement of school board training credits. And there's a document I'll be reading. This is for announcement of continuing education for TISD school board members, April eleventh, 2022 through April tenth, 2023. Under state Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As board president, I'm required to announce the name of each member who, as of that member's anniversary of election or appointment to the board, has completed the required continuing education, has exceeded the required continuing education, and is sufficient in meeting the required continuing education. There are seven training areas for board members continuing, continuing education. One, the local district orientation. Two, orientation to the Texas Education Code. Three, post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code. Four, team building. Five, additional continuing education. Six, evaluate, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. And seven, identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. Local district orientation. Don Cook was appointed to fill the vacancy of Sania Sanhee. She completed her local district orientation on September seventh, 2022. Mrs. Cook completed the Open Meeting Act training on December eleventh, 2022, and the Public Information Act training on December sixteen, 2022. Orientation to the Texas Education Code. No members were required to complete orientation to the Texas Education Code training for the time period covered by this announcement. Post-legislative update to the Texas Education Code. This training will be required for all board members following the eighty-eighth legislative session during the 2023, 2024 school year. Team building. The following board members, Lynell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gallin, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Sania Sanhee, who resigned as of August twenty-second, 2022, Virginia Suarez, and Dr. Bobby Ott, completed the required team building training on August tenth, 2022, earning three hours each. Evaluating student academic performance and setting goals. This training will be required for all board members during the 2023, 2024 school year. Identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking, and other maltreatment of children. The following board members, Don Cook, Lynell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gallin, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Virginia Suarez, and Dr. Bobby Ott, completed the required child abuse prevention training on December twenty-eighth, 2022, earning one hour each. School safety. The following board members completed the online school safety training on the following dates, earning two hours each. Ronnie Gaines, June tenth, 2022. Shannon Myers, August twenty-sixth, 2022. Don Cook, Lynell Davis, and Virginia Suarez, September twenty-eighth, 2022. Shannon Gallin, September thirtieth, 2022. And Dan Posey, September twenty-ninth, 2022. Cybersecurity. The following board members, Don Cook, Lynell Davis, Ronnie Gaines, Shannon Gallin, Shannon Myers, Dan Posey, Virginia Suarez, and Dr. Bobby Ott, completed the required child abuse prevention training on September eighth, 2022, earning one hour each. Additional continuing education, ten hours for the first-year members, five hours for subsequent years. The following board members have completed and exceeded the continuing education requirements. Don Cook exceeded and earned twelve hours, was appointed in September, 2022. Lynell Davis exceeded and earned eleven-point-five hours. Ronnie Gaines earned six-point-five hours. Shannon Gallin earned seven-point-five hours. Shannon Myers exceeded and earned eighteen hours. Dan Posey exceeded and earned eight-point-five hours. And Virginia Suarez earned eight hours. Item E is the TASB ESC Region Twelve Spring Workshop. It's Tuesday, May twenty-third, 2023, from four thirty, four thirty PM through nine fifteen PM at the ESC Region Twelve in Waco. Registration is required. If members, if you're interested, see Marilyn, she'll help you get registered. All right. Item F, future items of discussion, any items the board members wish to discuss at a future meeting? Okay. And item G is important dates, Dr. Ott.
Okay, I'll start with April thirteenth. This Thursday, we have the Wildcat Mentor End of Year Event, and that's at Ralph Wilson from eleven-thirty to one. That's a great opportunity for our community members that have adopted a fifth grader or sixth grader to come out and celebrate the opportunity for all of us to get together and celebrate the great work for this year. That, or this Friday, we have Little Wildcat Relays, that's from eight-thirty to two. The elementary students are excited about that. That's over at the stadium. Feel free to come out and walk around at any point in time, and you'll have a good time. It's a, Steve Prentice is smiling over there because it's a lot of work and it's a busy time. So I'm sure he's looking forward to that. Saturday, we have the TEF, or Temple Education Foundation Tennis Tournament. It's an eighties retro theme at Wild, Wildflower Country Club, eight to three o'clock. Hope to see some of you there, even if it's just a walk around dressed up a couple decades back. That's what I'll be doing to the best of my ability. And then April twenty-sixth, we have our Policy Committee. The twenty-seventh, we have our Facilities Committee. And also on the twenty-seventh, at six-thirty at the CAC, we have the Temple Children's Museum Annual Celebrity Host Dinner. And then May first, Temple College Groundbreaking. I hope to see you at that event. That'll be exciting. We have the TEF Impact Celebration. That was what we had known for many years, the Academic Recognition Celebration. So that's been rebranded and re-engineered a little bit. It's over at Western Hills Church of Christ, it starts at six-thirty PM. That's a really fantastic event. If you get a chance to go, seeing students, honor educators, and it's just, it's really a wonderful event. May sixth, Temple College Foundation is having a Kentucky Derby fundraiser. And I believe we have a table for that event, is that right? Yep, a table. And some of us are actually riding stick horses as part of the fundraiser, so we'll see how that goes. I may end up catching an illness before that day. May eighth, we have the School Board Regular Meeting. And then Superintendent Scholar Celebration, May fifteenth. As a reminder, that is a way to recognize our top ten freshmen, top ten sophomores and top ten juniors. Because you know, we do the seniors separately. So it's a chance to recognize academic achievement all through every level at the high school. And then the seventeenth, we have our Retirement Banquet at Temple College Pavilion, and that's always a special event. And just to round out the year, Board Policy Meeting, the twenty-fourth, Facilities the twenty-fifth, and Temple High School Graduation, May twenty-seventh, Bell County Expo Center, ten AM. And then we'll have another one in the books at that point. Okay? Yep, this spring has gone by quick, for sure.
All year.
Yeah. Item seven is consent items. Believe item E, Virginia, you need to recuse yourself from that. Abstain. So with that, we have items A through D, F through G two. How is the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
I move that we approve all items A through D and F and G minus item E on the consent agenda, consent agenda as one item.
Okay, the G two, okay.
Easy for me to say.
Okay. Very good. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor is signify by saying aye. Oppose, the same sign? Eyes have it. Thank you, passes. Item E, city's consideration of tax abatement agreement with HEB. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Gallin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Myers. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any oppose? And there's abstention by Ms. Suarez. Motion passes, thank you. Item eight, action items. A, human resources. One, consideration for approval of a resolution to designate Temple ISD as a District of Innovation. Dr. Ward.
Thank you. Back in 2018, in March of 2018, the board approved our very first District of Innovation plan. TEA provided feedback to us, and so it was amended. And we brought it back to the board in May to have the amendment approved. And so there was the assumption that the renewal would happen in May of 2023 because it's a five-year plan. However, TEA said, no, no, no. You, your plan is up from the first day that the board adopts the plan, which would have been in March. And so I'm asking you tonight if you would approve the resolution to start the process of becoming a District of Innovation again.
Members, are there any questions? This requires adoption.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Ms. Myers.
Second, the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor is signify by saying aye. Any oppose the same signs, sign? Eyes have it. Thank you.
And then I did want to kind of review some of the changes. So TEA did say that all of the meetings we've had this year can count towards the, the renewing, well, becoming a District of Innovation. And some, some of the changes that we've talked about with the committee is to, one, extend the certification timeline for teachers who are trying to become certified from one year to three years. This also benefits our CAT program that you learned about the other day because it will take a three-year process for our CAT participants to become certified. The next addition that we have is to change our, right now, teachers have to submit a resignation forty-five days before the first day of our contract. And so we're asking through our District of Innovation to make that sixty days before the first day of our contract. This is really important because school districts who start early, their, their teachers cannot get out of their contract as soon as our teachers can get out of their contract because of our late start in the year. And so this would kind of even the playing field between our district and other districts that start early and allow us to keep our teachers in their contracts. And then the next addition is, is a designation of a campus behavior coordinator. Right now, we are required to have a campus coordinator, a behavior campus coordinator, who's primarily responsible for maintaining student discipline and the implementation of this subchapter. And really, that's managed by our assistant principals on our campuses who build relationships, not only with our students, but also with our families. And so when we need to make a call home to a parent based on behavior, it really is delivered better from our assistant principals who manage that anyway. And so those are the proposed changes that we're going to make to our District of Innovation. Do you have any questions about those?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item two, consideration for approval of superintendent's recommendations regarding employment and contract status of administrative professional personnel.
Okay, so tonight we are bringing forward our principals, directors, executive directors, and our chiefs for your approval for the extension of their contracts.
Okay. Any questions, members? Does require approval?
A motion.
Motion by Mrs. Cook.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any oppose, the same sign? Eyes have it. Thank you. It's adopted. Item B is academics, and we do not have anything tonight. Item C is facilities and operations. One, consideration for approval of the KPA for engineering and design services for drainage improvements on the Temple High School campus. Mr. Boyd.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Posey, board. We discussed this in Facility Committee the other day. So with some, some pictures and a lot of diagrams and, and some extensive discussion. But what we bring to you tonight is a proposal from KPA to rectify some drainage challenges that we have on the Temple High School campus. We contacted KPA in January and asked them to look into this and prepare us this proposal. The proposal's attached and has a lot of detail to it. But in summary, the proposed project would include converting the existing open drainage channel on the south side of Stadium Drive to an underground stormwater system from the crossing of the drive on the east end, existing concrete pedestrian crossing at the Wild, at Wildcat Stadium. What that basically means is the open drainage channel that runs along the outs, outside of the left-field fence from the baseball stadium, that runs all the way to where the pedestrian walk-up is coming into Wildcat Stadium. So that, that's a large drainage piece there that, that we would be focusing on. And this project actually is a continuation of the improvements we started on the 2015 bond. For those of you that recall, we had open existing drainage that began way up at the northeast corner of the campus, which was up beyond the swim center and the, the CT. uh, the C T E area, and kind of meandered all the way through, uh, that campus. Uh, and then it, then it, it came out and continued on to the part that we're talking about here. Uh, on the last bond, uh, we covered, uh, that portion of it. Uh, that's a critical piece to be able to have property that is usable. You can't build a building on top of that drainage, but you can certainly have drives, green space, ball fields, anything else, uh, can be on top of that. And so that was really important for us on the last bond to do that and, uh, and allow us to have access to C T E, and really transform that, that part of campus. So, uh, what we see, this is really a continuation of that, and this is another piece to get, uh, underground. Uh, once covered, that area would become usable space for additional campus parking and required emergency access behind the new athletic training facility. That's another piece. If we did not do this, we would still be required to, uh, to build a bridge, if you will, so that access could get in behind the new athletic training facility that we're building. Uh, that's gonna be a requirement, uh, and so we'd be spending money on a bridge anyway. Uh, our, our recommendation that we bring to you tonight, uh, includes just going ahead and instead of using that money, rolling it into this project. The total amount for K P A services, uh, is projected to be two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's outlined in the proposal, and that includes contingency money. Uh, they would be responsible for engineering the project, bidding the work, providing oversight and administrative services during the construction of the project. They've estimated the entire cost to be around one point nine million, which includes their fees, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the actual amount won't be known for sure until it's designed and it's bid, and then we would bring you what, in effect, would be a guaranteed maximum price for your consideration at that time. So for now, we are simply presenting the proposal from K P A for your consideration. Uh, the contract for the actual construction will be presented at a later date, once we've gone through all of those steps. Uh, all the costs from the project will be funded with twenty twenty-two bond funds. Uh, we had earmarked, uh, infrastructure money in the bond funds for drainage work, for site improvements. Uh, and then, in addition, if necessary, uh, we can tap some, some interest generated that we are currently generating off of the bond money that, uh, that is in deposit. So, uh, that's how we would propose to cover those costs, and, and again, we can get into more detail on that uh, when we actually get pricing, but this would just allow us to go ahead and get K P A started with the design process. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Boyd? All right, this does require approval.
I move for approval.
Motion by Ms. Gallin.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Like sign to oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Kent.
D is Finance. No items there. E is Student Services. No items there. F is Board Committee Reports. Facilities Committee Update. Meeting held March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at four P M. Uh, the meeting was actually called to order at four oh seven P M. Dr. Ott presented a proposal by local his, resident historian Patty Benoit to place two state historical markers at Sampson Howard. The one honoring Cornelius Carl Sampson, and the other honoring Derwood and Gene Howard. Her proposal outlines the timelines, criteria, funding required for the application process with the Te, Texas Historical Commission. The committee members expressed support for her proposal. Ms. Parks and Mr. Boyd presented school color combination options for Sampson Howard. Administration selected three options that were not currently used by any other elementary campus in the district. After considerable discussion, the committee selected gold and blue as the color combination. Status updates were presented on the Zeta by Beta Property, a vacant lot near T H S and the Dixon Property. Mr. Boyd and Mr. Wolf provided updates on several projects to include Sampson Howard, security vestibles, girls' soccer practice field, H V A C replacement, roofing replacement, T H S auditorium improvements, Travis Competition Field, playground improvements, Bonham Middle School, Athletic Training Facility, T H S draining. The meeting was adjourned at five fifty-eight P M. The next committee meeting will be Thursday, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, at four P M. Policy Committee Update. Meeting was held on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, four P M. Uh, Mrs. Davis.
The meeting was called to order at four oh four P M., and a quorum was declared. Dr. Ott presented background information regarding a settlement agreement. A motion was made by Dan Posey to give the superintendent authority to finalize the resolution, and seconded by Don, Don Cook. Motion carried. Dr. Ott presented a proposal on a grant submission for two historical markers at Sampson Howard. The committee agreed to proceed. Update one twenty was presented, and policy changes were highlighted and discussed. This update will be presented at tonight's board meeting for consideration. The meeting was adjourned at four forty-three P M. The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, at four P M.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Item B is Consideration for Approval of Board Policy Update One Twenty. Mr. Hagenberg.
Good evening. Tonight, we're looking at Update One Twenty. I will say that this is, uh, this particular update probably has, uh, the least amount of significant changes, uh, that, uh, we've seen in, in a long time. A lot of the changes, uh, in particular are references, so instead of saying Texas Education Code thirty-five point two, it changes it to Texas Education Code thirty-five point.
Let me go ahead and read everything under here. I forgot that. I'm sorry. Under this, Consideration for Approval of Board Policy Update One Twenty. One, Update One Twenty Summary. Two, Update One Twenty Explanatory Notes. Three, Update One Twenty Legal Policy Comparison. And four, Update One Twenty Local Policy Comparison. Okay?
So a lot of those changes are, uh, references, and so when you change the re, those references or uh, the new federal law that's been passed, and they put in that, uh, particular reference, the policy is shown as having changes, but the content really wasn't changed. It was, most of it was, was those, and that was a big piece of these. Some of those we will highlight is B B D Legal. And this, uh, talks about board members and their continuing education requirements, and this deals with student safety. And just, it fits in just like all the other requirements you have. Uh, it's, it's a two-year cycle. You have to repeat, uh, the, the training every two years. And if you're a candidate, then you have, you can have this training up to a year before the election, or if you're newly appointed or newly elected, you have a hundred and twenty days to satisfy this requirement for this training. Next is B E Legal. Talks about board meetings, and this particularly video, uh, conferencing. And so that if that is something the board does, uh, with meetings, then you have a minimum broadband transmission requirement, uh, audio and video sound quality requirements with that. And if you have a dedicated video room environment, then it again has requirements for, uh, so, the size of the screen and the, the type of audio, uh, requirements for that. Next to the first local policy for your consideration is C B Local. And this deals with, uh, federal awards, so this, this was put in place for the ESER, the ESER two and the ESER three, the, from, uh, uh, the federal government, and that there's public notice, public notice can be given either as an information item at board meetings or on the website with that, and that the superintendent has authority to approve the, the plans in these, uh, particular grants. Next, C K B Legal. Deals with, uh, the the wording for emergency drills and safety drills. One of the things that's mentioned in this that, uh, wanted to highlight is active threat exercises. One of the things we've done this year is have tabletop exercises, not in, only at our S L T, but we're looking at having one this summer, full-blown tabletop exercise with, uh, Temple P D, the county, uh, emergency people, so that'll be a, a very extensive one with all the various agencies, and that'll happen uh, here in, scheduled to happen in August. Uh, this active threat one, uh, is different from that. That's when you have a full-blown onsite. All the people move through the pieces, and the streets are blocked off, and everyone practices that. Just wanted to mention, and, and there's requirements for communicating that to the public before it happens. Just wanted to mention that because that's something that, uh, Temple P D is, uh, looking at, so that in the future, after we have our tabletop exercise, this may be something that we do in the near future. So just wanted to let you be aware of that. The next local policy, C K C. Uh, this particular one, as far as in the Emergency Operations Plan, it adds that we have to have a, uh, trained derailment ex, uh, appendix with that, so that'll be in our next plan. Next is C M D Legal. Uh, this deals with the instructional materials allotment. It gives us a little more flexibility in that we can purchase things that aren't necessarily on the state-adopted list. Uh, and that, uh, things are eligible for purchase from this allotment related to technology such as, uh, equipment, software, and even, uh, internet connectivity-type things, as well as training of personnel. So that just gives, uh, the districts more flexibility in how uh, things that are allowed under the instructional facilities allotment. Next, E H B A E Legal. This is one of those catch-up things, uh, with, um, special ed, in that, uh, it used to be that you had, parents had a year in order to submit a, uh, complaint. Well, now, uh, the law, last session before this one, changed it to two years. Now they're just finally catching it up in the legal policy. So we've been operating under this for two years. It just now has hit it into our, into the policy. Next local policy, F N G Local. Uh, this adds that, uh, for the complaint process for, uh, student eligibility of free and reduced lunches are submitted in accordance with local policies, C O B. So that's just an added reference in that. The last local policy is F O Local. This, uh, talks about, uh, discipline, and one of the things I wanted to highlight here, which is unique for, for us with corporal punishment, whereas we as a district don't, uh, allow corporal punishment. One of the things that we do allow, which is outside of that, is, uh, coaches and P E teachers and teachers su, supervising recess, uh, they can have physical elements for a discipline measure, like they can, I know, right, uh, D A P, there, sometimes they have them walk around or, uh, various, uh, activities in lieu of a discipline procedure. So that is unique to us, and wanted to highlight that on that policy. And the last one, F O F Legal. Again, talking about, uh, discipline, this particular policy deals with restraint. And there's various requirements that if a student is restrained, then there's, uh, various procedures and policies and reporting that we have to go through. Uh, here, the law, um, clarifies that restraint does not include, so these are things that aren't part of restraint, is if there's, uh, physical contact as far as the adaptive equipment, so physical therapy-type things, that's not considered restraint. If it's limited physical contact for a student's safety, like if they, uh, hold, hold a kid's hand and keep them from running across the street, that's not considered restraint, as well as seat belts on buses, those, that isn't considered restraint too. So it just clarified those definitions of when those specific requirements are concerned. So any questions on policy one twenty?
Members, any questions? This does require approval.
I move that the board revise the local policies according to update one twenty as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Myers. Is there a second?
Second the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Davis. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any oppose the same sign? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. And that is our business for tonight. Thank y'all very much for joining us. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.